Happy Sunday, parents of the West Shore School District and Cumberland County. This is Mariana from The Boiling Point. And today I have a very special interview with a very special lady, Mrs. Kelly Brent. She is the school board president at the West Shore School District. She represents Region Two. And today, we're going to speak about Kelly Brent's year of advocacy and progress. So let's welcome to The Boiling Point, Mrs. Brent. How are you doing, Mrs. Brent?
I'm very good, thank you. Thanks, Mariana.
Good, good. So welcome for accepting our invitation. You're very welcome. Thank you for accepting the invitation, okay? I feel honored that you did. And let's get this rolling and let's get down to the facts, okay? Let's get down to the nitty gritty, like I was saying. Now, why, um, I'm going to start with this question, okay? First of all, tell us a little, a little bit about yourself and, and your background, because um, that's something that the parents, you know, are curious about and I think we need to share.
Okay, um, I was born in Clinton County. I'm sixty years old now. I'm very close to my twin baby little sisters. Uh, I have two sons and they are thirty-five and thirty-seven, really old. I have three grandchildren now. I am married to Jeffrey and uh, we live in Lewis Berry. We live uh, just the other side of the creek, but in Region Two. Um, I love to raise chickens. I love to play in my pond. Uh, I, I love all the creatures and, and um, I love to scuba dive, I love to sew, if it, I love to tile, I love to do all the things and um, I don't know, I went to Baldy Hill Nittany High School. I went to Central Pennsylvania New College. I went to Penn State um, with communications and uh, I didn't finish that, a little bit shy of that, but I had a baby. And that was Warren, and that was in nineteen eighty-eight. I had another baby in nineteen ninety. Yeah, yeah. And uh, I just raised the kids, stayed at home, read to them early, loved it all. And uh, just, you know, life, just got banged around for a little while. I own my own company. I started my own company in nineteen eighty-seven, so we are at thirty-eight years.
Oh wow, that's a blessing.
It, well, it's been a lot of hard work. And um, I started off just doing tapes. I needed to be able to earn income, but I wanted to be able to stay at home. So I would go to hospitals and clinics and collect, back in the day, they used to be cassette tapes. And um, yeah, I would pick them up in a box. They would give me letterhead and uh, forms and I would bring them home. And then in the neighborhood, I had a number of people who were willing to learn how to do it. And so we had a little group of transcriptionists that I led. Um, that was really fun and, and really cool. Again, it allowed me to stay home, make a nice income and uh, be home with the kids. And uh, yeah, so I did that for a while. Um, we moved to then Mechanicsburg when they were in middle school. And uh, they went to Cumberland Valley. Uh, I took my business and I started to expand it. Then we fully digitized, which allowed all the audio to go across the country. And all these years later, I applied for and after about a year and a half, was ultimately issued a K H code, so I am a federal contractor. I'm also a member of the Women Business Enterprise National Council, which is very exclusive and hard to gain membership to that organization. You can't buy your way in. It's not something you pay for. It's something that, you know, they come and they check your records and all the things. Um, so I am a businesswoman for real. I have about thirty-five subcontractors across the country. I have clients across the country. A bulk of them are in California and Texas. And um, yeah, so, so that's, that's me. I'd like to think that I bring to the, I was an instructor at Central Pennsylvania College for four years, between the years of, I think, nineteen ninety-two and nineteen ninety-six, I think, when Marshall was just a little tot. Uh, and so I, I do have a teaching background that people don't know about. And it was for four years. I did uh, rebuild a syllabus. I revamped the program. I modernized it, which is sort of weird to hear now, because it's, that was, it's antiquated now, you know? Um, so I know what it's like to sit in front of a room and to be teaching at a chalkboard and uh, you know, assigning things, assigning extra credit for things that are a little more difficult. Tutoring, working with the students to kind of bring up their skillset. Uh, I taught administrative, medical administration. I taught uh, medical, I, I taught anatomy and physiology and uh, one and two. I taught um, transcription, intro, then just transcription, and then one, two, and three for medical, because I was a proctor and certified as a medical transcriptionist back in the day. And I, I did, I did that over while I had my business. But in the end, uh, it took up way more time than it was taking away from my family and my business. And so I, I, I had to make a decision and I had to go with where the earnings were and where the potential was. You know, the potential of that kind of business is what you make it. And I like the idea of just being an independent person who doesn't really answer to anybody except every one of her clients, you know?
Wow, well, that's wonderful. You know, just with that little bit there that you shared, um, you know, with me, I was able to see that you're an innovator, you made your own way, you're a job creator, because now, you know, you're an employer. You are a very experienced businesswoman, okay? And that's a good quality to have, uh, you know, within the board, you know, as a board member, because you're going to be dealing with contracts, you're going to be dealing with finances, you know? And I just love the fact that you have teaching experience, because you know what the teacher goes through, what they have to face on a daily basis, not only with a student, but maybe even with a potential parent. So that's all wonderful, okay? And I like the fact that you grow chickens, I like to eat chickens, so.
We like to eat eggs and I like to eat chicken, but I can't eat my own. I just, I love them, they're so cute.
There you go. Now, let me ask you a question. Why did you decide to run for reelection?
Yeah, that's a really difficult, um, I would, if, I'll be vulnerable and I'll be honest. I started some projects and I want to make sure they get done. And I believe that they will not get done if I am not on the board to get it done. I believe that they will not get done. Like the Redland project, I'm afraid that won't get done. What's that?
And I've been in these meetings and I, I, I agree with you that I honestly believe that if you did not run for reelection, that these projects will be pushed to the wayside, you know?
I feel like they're waiting for it.
Yes, I feel that too. I feel that too.
Yeah, I feel like they're waiting for me to be out and in the meantime, they're just going to stall, stall, stall. And, or they're going to be in the Department of Entire Environmental Protection stage, where um, things can linger as long as years. And I, and I believe that if I fall off the board, um, that's where it will stay. I'm worried about this.
And you're, you're right. I, I'm worried about this project also. This project needs to come to fruition, okay?
It does. We have, we've been given so much grant money. Uh, and it's exclusively and only for a turf project. And I really do believe that the Redland community has been underserved. And I, and, and Dr. Cox is working on it. He's the one who's really spearheading this. And uh, it's a, it's a project worth doing for all of the kids at Redland. I feel like that's just an inequity that's gone on quite long enough.
I agree, I agree. There has to be equality in resources. And you know, I have nothing against Cedar Cliff, because you know, my boys go there. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, in fact, scholastically and um, athletically, sometimes it seems as though they're better equipped. And there has to be equality. Um, these kids in Redland deserve something that they call their own. Now, I want you to clear up something for the audience, because I hear two terms that are being flung around, okay, in the community, because you know, I'm constantly speaking to parents and my phone is constantly ringing. And that is, is this a stadium? Or is this a field? And what is the difference?
Great question. If you hear someone say, "The West Shore Stadium", that is someone who does not support the project. They're using the word stadium to conflate the price to the listener. You see? So uh, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a subtle sign, if they call it a stadium, that they are against the project.
Gotcha.
It is a turf field. It will have goalposts. Uh, it will, it will have some bleachers, not a lot. It will not be a stadium. It is a turf field with a place uh, to have a home game, right? To, to have their home games at their real home. And it, it will have some bleachers. It is not a stadium. It will be nothing like Cedar Cliff, but it's something that's theirs.
Well, thank you for clearing that up. Now, you already stated that there's grant monies allotted for this. Um, is there much taxpayer money coming out to, you know, support this project also? Or is it going to be grants and um, maybe fundraisers? Uh, what does the dynamic of the financial side of it look like, more or less?
Well, that's a great question too. It's a little bit dynamic. Uh, so Dr. Cox, one of our private citizens, who's very invested in our community. Dr. Cox uh, has relationships with many leaders in our community. But Mike Regan uh, has been amazing. He has brought in these, and Mike Regan is a graduate of West Shore School District. He's retired now. But he knows the people in the financial pockets that distribute this money from within the Capitol, from within our government, from within the state. The first grant that we received was a one million dollar ARPA grant. That's, that was a federal grant. Um, and that was to be used for the turf project. A small, sorry, my husband's going outside. A small, a, a, a small, um, a million dollars doesn't go far when it comes to re-grading and things like that. And I just want to come back to a point on that. This was raised by a private citizen. This was earned through Dr. Cox and Mike Regan is now retired. Senator Regan is now retired. So um, but they brought it in and we didn't have to match those funds. Then he got us, yes. And again, it was a federal grant. So to be really clear, the grant money is from all of the taxpayers in the, in the country, if it's a federal grant, right? Uh, so our taxes did not go up for us to receive that money. It, it's kind of free money to us. Sorry. Um, and then, and then um, the two million, the two million is a little bit more interesting. The two million came from the state. And that's called a RAC P grant. Now, the two million did require matching. So we would not be able to get the two million dollars if our school district didn't match it. That's a little bit hard to swallow, I admit. But as the roads get busier and busier, as the highway gets busier and busier, and I, I just don't necessarily think it's a great thing that our football team, lacrosse, field hockey uh, gets shipped over to Cedar Cliff after their school day. I mean, why can't they just, like every other school, bell rings, go to the locker room, change out, go out to the field and practice? It would just eliminate so many things for families as well, because the families can then also, from the bleachers, watch those children play at home.
Correct, and, but, I'm sorry, going into those two million, you know, a lot of people may have a problem that we had to match it, but we have to see something. Even if we match it, we're still on the winning side, because it's two million dollars more that we did not have.
That's right, that's right. We are on the winning side and school districts are fighting desperately for these kinds of grants. In fact, I'm proud to tell you that this is the first two million dollar RAC P grant that our school district has ever received, ever received.
Quite an achievement.
It's quite an achievement. And it became a matter of, um, well, do we want to match the dollars? Or do we want, we, we, maybe we just don't want the money? Like, whoa, 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 whoa.
That would be foolish not to take an opportunity that way. That would really be foolish.
Absolutely. And this, this came from the private citizens. It came from the help that the private citizens gained for us. There seems to be a little bit of animosity between the private citizens and maybe administration. Um, there, there's, there's something that isn't working together like I would like it to. So I'm going to be the thing that throws myself into the center of that, so that everything, you know, I want to be able to get this grant. This, it would have been so irresponsible, but it, and it, I'm just going to speak very frankly. And I, I hope I don't say something out of line. But it, it, there's a little, there, okay? So there's a little bit of pettiness in the board about, so you will, and I won't name names, but you will hear a particular or several board members say, "Well, yeah, I'm for the project, but I'd like to point out that this project with the one million dollar grant has now gone over and now it's, you know, one million, three hundred thirty thousand. And, and I just think our, our people should know about that." So we, we, so what they did with the million dollar ARPA grant was they had to do the improvements first. And they, and parking, some parking spots, handicap parking, a, a series of things. And in order to even begin to use the two million. But they ran into an old septic system that they had to take out. There, there was no way we had knowing of, of any of that. It wasn't in any of the plans or any of the historical plans. They had to um, tear out some old terracotta piping that led away from the school that was no longer used, but was in the ground and replace it. I can't remember what it was for, but I think it was related possibly to the pool. Um, which, and the pool, by the way, is forty-eight years old. So um, there were a lot of things that needed to be brought up to the point where we could actually start, start to then use the two million dollar grant. And um, hold on one second. I am on so many antihistamines, I've been, uh,
I can relate.
We're all sick with the allergies, right? So um, and one of the things that I think I spoke about in the video that's circulating is my aggravation, and it really just is a small aggravation. We have, we had, we got this grant, okay? And out of the woodwork came a candidate who lost her election. And uh, and then she weaponized her, one of her family members.
I remember that.
Yep. And uh, suddenly, our inbox was full of email. Now, remember, we just, we just got the grant. The grant was just announced with, within like a week or two. Magically, appear. Uh, a series of ADA compliance issues that the, the school district has never addressed. Now, you've got another.
And now it comes up. Exactly. Now, when you guys came into office, into your seats, now they started digging and throwing everything, plus the kitchen sink at you guys to put, and this is what, this is my personal opinion, okay? As a taxpayer, as a parent who goes to these meetings. They threw everything in the kitchen sink at this project and at the conservative board members to try to muddy them up and make them look as it was irresponsible and irresponsible spending. When in reality, if we're really going to call a duck a duck, um, these are things that should have been addressed when some of these former board members, okay, that
Many years ago.
And veteran board members that are sitting should have addressed years ago, but they kept putting it in the back burner. Decades, exactly.
Yeah.
And it's put in the back burner. And what happens when you don't repair things, especially like at home? If you have a pipe and you're just ignoring it, eventually it's going to burst and eventually it's going to cost you more, because you should have handled it when the problem was first originally there.
When you can control it, you know? Yes, you're right. So um, but suddenly, we started receiving emails. I mean, it was, the timing was, wow. Um, we start receiving emails about, with a list of non-compliant ADA locations that have to be brought up. And it was when Dr. Cox brought in this ARPA grant. And so the pettiness appears to be that the grant money, they, they didn't want him to have that. They didn't want him to be able to achieve for our community, a, a, a football field, uh, some bleachers, where our community, not just the Cedar Cliff community, but our community. And we love Cedar Cliff and I'm so thankful they have everything they have. But there is a real uh, difference in those two, you know, fields and athletic, you know, facilities. There's a real difference. And uh, so we, we have a million dollars, but it, it appeared to the conservative group that it was attempted to be funneled away from the intention of the person who brought it in. And that's the pettiness, right? That is the, and, and that still sits on the board, the pettiness. Um, so it was my goal at that time to make sure that as much of the grant that was achieved by our private citizens and Senator Regan remained focused on the project as intended. And um, I was able to do that to stomach, to some extent. But um, we definitely had some ADA updates with that money. And we want ADA compliance within the whole district. That's not, that's not the point. And it, you know, our, our babies or our children who, you know, are in wheelchairs, our grandparents who are in wheelchairs, they need access. But this is the law and they need it. And, and there but for the grace of God go any of us who needs handicap access. It's just that the school district never did it. And, and the school district itself should have been the one to apply for grants to help with those costs and gotten that done decades ago. The pettiness, the pettiness is in never doing it, sitting on this information. We didn't even know this hap, that this was going on. We didn't know we weren't ADA compliant. And sitting on this information until a lump of money comes in from someone you don't necessarily like. And so they're going to, they're going to just take that for them. And, and then we had, we're making all, everything updated. But that's expensive. And so they're looking for places to take that money. And, and that grant money, which was pretty specific, was, was partly used for those things. And again, our schools, district should have been compliant for decades. I, I was stunned to find, right? I was stunned to find that we were not compliant. And so um, it is what it is. Improvements were made. There were some changes in the, the bus loop. And uh, there were some changes in the grading. We did remove uh, some things out of the ground that needed to be removed that we didn't know were there. So there's been a lot of, uh, there is some parking, there's handicap parking, which we're really happy to have. Um, and that would have been part of the improvements anyway. Because, you know, we're, it's, it's starting, now we're starting to get to the people who are going to go to the, the games, the lacrosse games, the, you know, the, the field hockey games. So now we're starting to get to the intent of that million dollars. But it, it just was, I just, I, it was unfortunate.
It was an attempt to sabotage. It was an attempt to sabotage, but then again, you know, we have to.
I, I can't say that, but it certainly feels that way. And it was from a private citizen.
Yeah, you can't, but I can, because I see it, okay? However, it comes back to the principle, um, the biblical principle, that what they intended for bad, God intended for good. Because now we have the ADA parkings and everything else that we need for the, you know, for the handicap and disabled people. So that's a wonderful thing. Now we can focus on the field.
It's necessary, yeah.
Exactly. The sad part about it is that this is something that was ignored for decades from, by the previous board members that had been sitting in that board, okay? And the moment that we have a new set of people coming into the board, now they're throwing everything at them, plus the kitchen sink, things that they knew they ignored and they kept from the public. Because this is something that should have been released to the public, that this was a thing that needed to be repaired. And then we will have come and questioned, well, what are you doing without tax money? Okay? We would have been able to ask that question and ask for accountability. Because Lord knows how many people, while they were there and this was going on, had issues in getting parking and finding parking for the disabled, because they never followed through with it. So it's actually a win. It's actually a win.
It's a huge win. It's a huge win.
Yes, but they intended to do. It's a blessing. Exactly.
It's our watch now.
If you're one, and it's your accomplishment, because the, the beauty of this is that you guys did not ignore it, okay? There's a beauty here. You guys did not ignore it. You say, "Our people need it, our parents need it, our children need it." Fine, let's move forward. Yeah, it was a little inconvenient in that it pushed the project a little bit back, okay? But it got done. It got finally.
Absolutely. But then another thing came out of the woodwork. So right after the grant, the other thing that came out of the woodwork was the swim teams coming in. And the students from the swim teams coming in and talking about um, broken tiles, bleeding toes. Yes, and
I remember.
So I'm sitting there thinking, so we don't have ADA compliance? And our auditorium is falling apart? And this comes forward because of the grant? So people are coming forward and saying, "Well, what about me? What about me? What about me?" And they're not wrong.
They're not wrong.
They're not wrong to do that.
And I don't know if you remember the mother, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you, but you don't know if you remember the mother that came in with her cell phone? That she went to see her daughter at the auditorium and the humidity and the heat was so much that it actually damaged her cell phone? And she showed us all her cell phone, do you remember that? Something that was still, that was, right? And that was something that, that problem's been there. That problem's been there for decades, ignored until the new board came in.
Yes. So, so now we realize that we're, we're not ADA compliant, which is a problem, right? And um, and, and, and our auditorium is in a state of yikes. Right? We'll just call it the state of yikes. And um, if you want, if, if the community wants to know more about that, Bren did a great uh, two-part series, two, two-part piece, news piece. And uh, you will be able to see in the video some of the rusted equipment, some of the uh, you'll see, honestly, it looks like, like a seventies nuclear movie or something.
Horror, horror movie. I, I, I saw both sides. Yeah, I saw both sides. And it was concerning. It shows really the state that it was in. You know, I could have, I could have filmed a horror movie in there, you know? But um, yeah, yeah. So what's going on with an auditorium?
Okay, so uh, we'll move over to the auditorium. So at this point, we have some ADA stuff that's getting caught up. And that's as it should have been decades ago. And now we have the auditorium because of the million dollar grant, which was intended for a turf project. Now we're starting to see these other things that we didn't know were problematic. And now they're, they're right, right here, right? It's like, oh no. Uh, so the auditorium was built forty-eight years ago. It's never been updated. And so we have old HVAC systems. So that mother who's had the phone issue, there were also, there was also a mother and a merde in the same one, who came in and spoke about, she has a gauge, like a, like a humidity checker. Something like that, temperature and humidity. And it was like ninety-eight degrees in there the one day. Um, when I say the one day, I mean consistently. Consistent enough that she bought a gadget to be able to measure it, so that we had data, right? And she came in and spoke about that. And um, And she came in and spoke about that. And um and humidity levels that were. And and those, there are parameters that that should be observed for the health of everyone in the in the nadiatorium. And that was way outside. So um, so now we're we're thinking. What is going on over there now, right? So we got a tour. We toured the nadiatorium. And uh. There are a lot of very necessary parts that are working but are almost completely corroded through. And they don't make parts for them anymore. Parts including like a a particular pump that goes with a particular type of plumbing. That goes with, you know, and uh a filtration system that may be antiquated, that is antiquated, right? Uh, so, so now we're faced with a grant for the football thing. We're faced with ADA compliance that isn't there and we're faced with a uh an nadiatorium that is. If it has a catastrophic fail, will ultimately cost us more money than a renovation.
Correct, correct.
And so I'm a a huge proponent of children knowing how to swim. I I I'm not really sure of all of the many places that it comes from, but. It terrifies me, a child not knowing how to swim. It just terrifies me. And. We need to use that resource and protect our kids with a life skill so that when they're out camping with their parents. Where there's a lake, uh they don't become a statistic. And I hope I never hear about it because. Not knowing that they had a great time and they came back and there was a non-event at a lake, we'll never know, right? The the. But if we have that resource, and we do, and a renovation will be less than, you know. Putting in a new one. Um, I I feel like it's a, it's a good use of resources. And I've been speaking to uh retired Senator Reagan and his staff. And they are going to attempt to get us grants for part of that work as well. He thinks they can get between three to five for that million for that renovation, which would offset. The the most of the cost. And they will. Yes. Now, that's not final, uh but either way, we have to move forward with renovation.
And it is a step in the right direction when somebody is looking to help and find grants, okay, to help renovate this. And I do agree with you, because I don't know if you remember last summer, I believe it was. We had a child who was a student of the West Shore School District drown. I believe it was in the yellow breeches. And it broke all our hearts, because I remember Heidi crying in the school board about this child. So this is an essential curriculum, an essential skill for any child. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. In reference to the money, I mean, if they are able, and this comes to fruition to get this um. This grant, you know, that's less money from the taxpayer dollar.
That's a hundred percent right. And uh for some reason, this kind of, this kind of uh more aggressive move from. For I'll speak for myself, because that's coming from my business, okay? These things were not being achieved under the old school boards.
And they had knowledge, they had knowledge of it.
So the West Shore Foundation gets some things done as well. Uh, you have to give them credit. They they raise a lot of money. Um, but I I I just, I'm the one calling them now. Saying, hey, uh, we have an nadiatorium and do you think that we can get an HVAC grant? Because they, the the grants are all sorted, like it it could be in like a public walkway improvement. It could be, but there are these little subcategories where you can use the money. And we might be able to get some HVAC money. We may be able to get some plumbing money. And and all these things are going to be necessary to offset some of the costs, not necessary, but des- very desired. So I'm on the phone with them every two weeks saying, hey, um, what do you need to know from us to go after some of it? And and things are getting done behind the scenes right now. Um, it's a little bit outside the board. But if we can get something to happen, it benefits our community.
And you know, Mrs. Mrs. Brent, as I'm hearing you speak, I'm happy about one thing, and this is something I have been observing. In the time that you have, you know, taken that seat, as first as a board member and now as the president, is that you have a skill. That many people do not, and somebody needs to address it, okay? And it's it's a wonderful skill. And what I've observed from you is that you you are a wonderful fundraiser.
Thank you.
As a fundraiser, I'm lousy, but that's a beautiful skill for you to have, not only as a businesswoman. But as a school board member, because that skill of yours of fundraising can wind up saving us a lot of money, okay? The taxpayers, because you're looking for other solutions versus, you know, killing us with taxes. And I thank you for that. I thank you for that skill. And you know, also putting into effect that skill, because we're starting to see the outcome of this. Or at least the very beginnings, okay, of what's gonna eventually come to fruition. I thank you for that.
Well, I I thank you. I want to give Dr. Cox all of the glory, because this all started on his. As his project. But um he needs an advocate so that the project keeps going. And and you know, I happen to know these folks outside. I happen to know Senator Reagan. And I happen to know some of his staff. And uh they're like, Kelly, we're gonna assure you that we're gonna keep pushing forward. Um, you know, we see that it's underserved and there's a lot of money out there that we know that your school has never tapped into. And I said, you know what? I'll call back in two weeks. And so we keep circling back and following up with each other. So I, I think it's my business history where it makes you. You must be tenacious and you must be focused on the goal. But the goal requires steps down here. And once I understand the goal. Then we just, we, you know, we go, we go backward and we say, okay, what tasks do we need to accomplish this goal? But my eyes never lose focus of the goal. And if it stalls, I know it. And if it stalls, I'm calling administration saying, hey. Where are we with such and such? You know, and and uh then I just. Take out my notes and start writing things down. And I think, you know what? I need to make a call to so and so and so and so. So I am working on that board. Almost as a business person.
And we needed a business person on that board. We needed a business person.
There isn't anyone on the board like me. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a one-off. Um, which is not to say that I understand everything better. I don't necessarily. I will be doing things probably a little bit differently. But that's, I think, a compliment to what we have on the board, not necessarily a bad thing. I'm I'm losing my train of thought here. Let me go back on um. Oh, so just trying to keep the projects going and knowing what's active. I think. There is. I don't know how to say this. I just, I really wanna be honest and frank and speak from.
Be honest and frank. That's what we're about.
Okay, so there is a bit of a. An elitist attitude. About, about being, spending your life in education that makes you the best school board member.
Not necessarily, but you're correct. They they have that attitude.
Yeah, they do. And uh they'll say, well, this person has twenty years in education like my opponent has twenty X amount of years in education. And um, you know, she's transparent. No, she isn't. What does she stand for?
No, she's not.
What what does she stand for? There there's nothing on her signs that indicate what she stands for. Um, and her team is throwing my signs away. Um, but but she doesn't come out and say, I'm a Democrat and I believe in this. I I'm very uh open about my positions. Uh, they're not hard and fast. I can be swayed with a solid argument. I'm really probably somewhat moderate. Uh, as my worldview has become more moderate for whatever reason. But I am definitely a conservative and I want to help the board with the financial challenges. And if it's only through grants, our community should know that. If we raise taxes, it will be three million dollars of revenue to our school district. To to. And that's if we raise the taxes on everyone. So if we tax every household to, let's say, two-thirds of what we're allowed to do. That will only generate three million dollars. So when you hear three million dollars for the football. You know, not stadium, but field. Um, that's the perspective of what you have to look at, that free money. It's an entire tax increase for our community that we didn't have to do. We got it for, sort of for free. I also heard about the the RAC P, the two million dollar RAC P grant that we received. That's a state grant. And that money comes from um, the governor takes out a very low interest bond, I think. And then that was for a billion dollars. And then that's where our representatives or senators will go to help the region. They tap into that and it's extremely low interest. But we don't have to pay it back. However, it should be stated that because it is a state grant. It has come from the pockets of everyone who lives in Pennsylvania. The grants are never free money. But what would happen is if we didn't get that money, Erie would get that money. Our residents are still putting tax money into, you know, the the state coffers, right? But our residents are not getting back pieces of it. It goes to Philadelphia. It goes to Pittsburgh. It goes to Wilkes-Barre. It goes to Redding. It goes to uh, it goes to all points in between, Lancaster, you know, and. It's time for us to stand up for our community and say, hey, wait a minute. Redland doesn't have a football field. It's it's time for us to to get our share. We have not received our uh, the certainly, I don't think anywhere near what we we should have been pursuing. So we are bit behind, but now we have people. We have advocates out there that I know that know me, that trust me. And uh they know that I'm going to make that work because it's a goal. And and if I can do one thing, I can kick something over a finish line, which which is what you're seeing now in policy. About policy, but you'll see them get kicked over the finish line as I am the president. I'm not going to let my eye on the fine. Yeah.
That is wonderful. Wonderful, wonderful.
Hopefully that explains that the the federal grant comes from our federal taxes. Um, but it could go to Arizona. It could go anywhere, but we were able to pull a piece of that back here for our school district. And the state grant, they can go to anywhere in the state and most of it does. But we got a little something. That we don't have to pay back. That our community has been feeding anyway. And that's the construct of the grants. And until we change that, if you don't like it, change the construct, go to your legislature, change the construct. But where we are in the way things work now, we have to have someone who's connected to people who can bring this money in. And now you have that. Now you have that. But my opponent, my opponent is a Democrat. And she's an educator. I I fear for our community. That has nothing but educators or educator adjacent. People on the board, because all you will get is yes, yes, yes to everything that the school district says it wants. And it will not, in my opinion, based on my my year and a half experience on the board. In my opinion, it will always be what's best for the student. Now, I also want what's best for the student. But there is a host. And that's the taxpayer. The host hosts everything that happens in that school district. And that's the parents and the taxpayers. We are the host. And. The taxpayers have representation on that board. And they wanted a more broad representation. Than just educators. They needed a businesswoman on that board. And um, they they just, they needed to be made up of a little bit more than educators. So we have uh, we have Chris Kavik, who isn't a retired educator. Uh, so every decision that benefits. Uh, every cost that serves uh that, you know, the teachers' union or whatever it is. There's, he he benefits. So he's literally voting on things that will circle back and benefit him in his retirement, right? And that's great for him. Good for him, but part of the, a part. We have to look at education as something that is morphed into. And we have to have a really realistic thing in our minds about what it's morphed into from where it used to be. It's, God only knows how many times more expensive to educate children. And the proficiencies are actually getting worse. The the scores are actually lower. And and we have so much more money coming in. And um, but. You know, the co-. Sorry to go off on a tangent here.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Um. The salary and benefits and pension of the teachers is unionized. That is actually seventy percent of our budget. And and all of this is. It it's, so. Seventy percent, we can't do anything without money. That's set aside. We really get to make the difference of maybe, I don't know, just. Maybe fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. That's all we, or I'm sorry, million. Uh, but our budget is going to be, I think, like a hundred and eighty million next year. I mean, it's it's not a small thing. Um.
No, it's not a small thing. Seventy percent going just to administration. That says a lot. That says a lot, because there's things that need to be done.
It is, it is. And and those numbers are never going to go down. And you know, one of the the hard things to accept is. Our teachers are world-class teachers. These kids.
Yes, they are.
Are unbelievable. That WorldQuest win, now all those kids go to Turkey. That was, I mean, how proud are we of our students and the teachers who who love them and teach them? Nobody loves and teaches like a teacher, you know?
I mean, even our music department is wonderful. I have to, and I think I shared with some board members. Um, I have to, you know, take off my hat to Mr. Topping at Cedar Cliff High School. The thing that that, that thing that that teacher can do with these children is fascinating. I mean, he brings out the best out of these kids, the best. And he doesn't discriminate. There's a group for every group of 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 children, you know, that want to enter this choir, this chorus. And just look at the Mosaic concert every year. That's awesome. I mean, we packed the house. We have people standing. I went to the spring concert just a couple nights ago, because my my son is part of the of the chorus. And it was wonderful, the things that he accomplishes, you know? So yes, we do have excellent teachers, you know. In um, in the West Shore School District. And we wanna keep them also.
Yeah, we have creative programs like the Da Vinci Program. I mean, wow, that that was a, that was a huge wow for me. Um, so I, I I love our teachers. And I I feel. Like there's a lot going on with our teachers that um. I, there's a lot going on with them. And honestly, I don't think I could ever pay them enough to do what they do. But but it all has to work together, right? It, we all have to. We have to be able to support it in our community. And we have to watch the taxes that get raised on the fixed income eighty-five-year-olds that are still living in their home. Um, you know, it's, it it's just, it's a lot of things that. It's many, many balls in the air, I will tell you that. And but I, you know, we have to protect our teachers. And we have to protect and retain that staff.
And you know what's sad in me, I'm sorry, Mrs. Aubrey, I mean to cut you, but you know what's sad in me also? There was a rumor going around, I would say maybe a few weeks ago, that um, the board, the 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 board members, the majority. That, um, the board, the, the, the board members, the majority was looking to make cuts in certain programs. Among them was music and band. And when I researched, cause you know that I research everything, I just don't open my mouth to open it. Okay, um, that was never, ever on the table. And to just throw that to hurt the board. I mean, people, we gotta stop. We have to start talking truth, okay? And putting out the truth out there. And I have to bring this out there because there were a lot of people concerned, not only staff, but students, okay? Who love these programs. And to say that they were looking to cut it, that was never considered and that was never on the table. And now that we're speaking about the teachers and staff, and I didn't mean to cut you, but I do have to bring that forth.
Yeah, so we can talk about that meeting just for a moment, if I can. Um, I know what, I know exactly what you're talking about. And I was, I left that meeting and. I was so spicy when I left that meeting. I was just. Really upset at the. It, it's, it's like a tactic, you know? So what happened in that meeting was we asked. Our superintendent for budget options, you know? So that we had some idea of if we had to raise taxes, how much? So I'm gonna back up a little bit and talk about, and I'm gonna define. The way the tax increases can happen. There is what's called an Act One Index. And the Act One Index is voted upon every new school year. And it comes up with a percentage. You're allowed to increase taxes by, uh, let's say six point two. That's my little lady dog. Is her little congestive heart failure, coughing. Uh, so the Act One Index, so every year is different. And it is set by our legislature. And all the school districts in the state must follow the Act One Index. And it is the top limit that we are allowed to tax our community for school tax. So, um, last year it was like six point two, maybe. This year it's, I think, four point eight. Poor Daisy. Um, so this year it's four point eight. And, um, so we wanted to see options. We wanted to see what can get done. With maybe three options. So unfortunately, um, they brought us two worthless options. So we only had one real option. So let's talk about the worthless options. Because these were, these were, this, it was just, uh, this was a stunt. Without question. They brought us a, this is what's going to happen if you zero tax increase. We know we can't zero right now. Um, and there's a lot of reasons why you shouldn't be zeroing and a lot, and, and that, we'll tackle that in a minute. We know it can't be zero. So these are the things that will have to be cut if it's zero. But we already know that zero is really not an option. But they gave it to us as an option. And then they brought forth the worst case scenario and band and music classes was among those on a slide. Uh, I believe Dr. Dr. Stoltz called it the doomsday slide. Well, the doomsday slide had, you know, all the things that we absolutely adore. But in the audience was sitting, uh, I think most of our music teachers. And because on the doomsday slide, music, band, all those things were on the doomsday slide. So it brought out the members of the band who sat in the front row and they all had their sweatshirts on. And, um, I'm thinking to myself, what's going, why are they here? And then they got to the doomsday slide and I thought. Is this an effort to strike fear into our teachers, our music teachers? Then I started getting spicy because I started thinking, did they just do that? Did they just scare our music teachers to come forward at a board meeting? So that we could see that music was on the table as a cut? And I thought to myself, listen, I'm never cutting music, never cutting music. I played a flute and a piccolo. Uh, I played the flute for. Um, from third grade to twelfth grade. And I played the piccolo for a couple of years as a junior and a senior. Um, I had to use one of the piccolos at the school that they had because I, we couldn't afford a pi- a piccolo in addition to my flute. So, um, but my sister played a saxophone. Uh, my father was a musician. And, um, you know, music is in my blood. And thank God it is in mostly everyone. Because. I think music ends up being our best friend. In the really worst times of your life. And I understand music, I can read music to this day. And, um, I know how important it is in my life. And it would be one of the, I mean, I think I'd cut anything before I'd cut music. So our, our, our music teachers are so safe. We all respect and understand how important music is to round out an existence as a human. You know, and, and this will follow you for your whole life.
Yes, it will.
Yes, it's, it's so important. And, um. You know, it teaches you to appreciate music, music appreciation. And, you know, my mom died last summer and I know where I went. To grieve, I know what music I went to to grieve, but go to that music I did. And it really helped me through that process. Um, I know when my father died, I know what music I listened to to grieve. You know, Miami Lou Harris was, uh, the Jayhawks another time, you know, there's all these. But I have a real sense of music appreciation. And that's the kind of stunt that I really don't like. Putting fear into the minds of certain groups of individuals that are employed with us. That really frosted me, I was angry about that. It was unnecessary and it was kind of fear mongering almost. Right? So we have a zero percent option. Zero percent option was not really an option, I hope you see that now.
Yeah, of course I see that, we all see that.
It was not an option, right? Then there was the maximum tax increase. Which we couldn't do that either. Right? So, so we're not gonna go to the maximum, not on our community.
And that's what the administration have been pushing for though.
Of course, max tax, even Dr. Stoltz said it at a meeting last year. I said, Dr. Stoltz, if you could do anything, what would it be? And he thought about it for a whole second and he said, I would tax to the max. Like, yikes, um, that's not very reassuring because.
But that's been the consensus for a while because we also have another candidate that's running against Sandra Gonzalez. Okay, and he's also another tax to the max guy. Okay, and we all know, um, what his name is, I'll give you the initials BG, you guys go do your homework. Anyway, you know, so that has been the mentality for years now. Tax to the max and I believe if, if tax to the max is the only option, that's all we have, that's fine. But we have to see whether we, uh, we need to go down that avenue.
Yes, um, I know that he's been a bit of a fiscal hawk at times. And I know that he has voted no on some of the budgets. I know he voted yes on the budget last year, but I think it was under a, a duress kind of situation that. You know, I voted no. Uh, I didn't feel necessarily like that, I had been there long enough to. Really impact that budget and.
And you stated that too, I was there, you stated that also, the reasons why. And those were wise reasons.
Yeah, I, 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 I really, I think I'm more transparent than anybody on the board. Even though they like to sling at me that I'm not transparent, I'm very transparent. Um, in fact, that, that natatorium piece that Brayden did, which was wonderful and it's been seen like thirty-five thousand times, which is crazy.
Yes.
That was my effort. And, and that is Kelly's effort, by the way. That was something that I said, Brayden, listen, I hired you. When we voted to hire you, I had this in mind. We need to bring our community in. We need to bring them in and show our community the things that are happening in a way that they can relate to. So they can have a presence or a say. If they wanna come to a board meeting about something, they need to know. And I don't think people really read Points of Pride. Uh, uh, you know, the feedback I get about Points of Pride is that, oh, you know, I get it if I have time to read it, but I usually don't. But. But that story that he did impacted many people. That would be, you know, thirty-five thousand views. While many of those views might be repeats. Uh. We have a population of seventy-five thousand people. That's a big, that's a big accomplishment. And I said, I wanna do that for the Redland Project. I want to do that for, um, every, the Allen Middle School. I want our community to know the, the inner workings. And we have to feed it to them in the friendliest format. Our community has a right to know what's going on. And, uh, I don't think Points of Pride is where it's going to happen. So. I let him loose on that project and it's exactly what we needed. I said, we need a reporter, reporting to our community citizens. And, uh, so I, in that way, I created real transparency.
Yeah, through that.
That was, and that's what I want also. We, we tackled curriculum transparency for the first time. And this is, this is my fighting for this. For the first time, I wouldn't let it go. I wasn't going to let it go. And I think this is one thing that administration has finally learned from me. This, all these things get to fall through the cracks on somebody else's watch, but man. I am like a dog with a bone, that's a personality trait that I have. And it's for better and for worse, right? It, it.
Right.
There's some downside to, to having that, I understand. But, um. Curriculum transparency is something also that I did get it, it, it as an accomplishment. Let me touch briefly on that. Before, the parents had to make an appointment at the school district. Then come at that appointed time, whether or not they had a job. Work early. And, um, they came. It was almost like. Okay, here's some insight to my brain. This was very backward to me. Our parents are up here. They are our taxpayers, they are we the people. We the people own this country. We are the masters of these tax increases. And we are the masters of still what happens in our schools. We the people. By our community, by we the people electing a board, that is their representation. If they want a conservative board, we're here for it. If you don't, vote us out, right? Um. But I got curriculum transparency, we were able to get a digital software. That will allow our administrators or our, our, you know, support staff to send that to the parent. And they will be able to read all of the curriculum on their iPad at home at their convenience. But having the parent have to come in at an appointed time, only have X amount of time to go through it. And I think there was some sort of stipulation that it was like one class per child per year or some.
Per year, yes, yes.
I, I'm like, wait. What? This is, these are the people who pay us. Why does this work like this? And so, um, I wanted, I wanted our administration to bear the brunt. Of making it easy on the parents. Because that is how our government is structured. If you respect your community. If you respect the people who elect the board, who employ the administration, that's how it should be.
And that is the way, correct, that is the way it's structured in our constitution. Because the parents have inherent rights over their children. And as, um, constituents and taxpayers and Americans, we the people have the right over our government. Okay, over our local government, over our school board. And also, we are allowed under the constitution to, uh, to call them on the rug when they go astray. And that's why when it comes to the curriculum transparency, I was the first one shouting up and down, okay? When I saw you guys moving this forward because there was so many roadblocks. You, you know, Kelly, that my, my phone rings constantly, okay? And people, what can we do, what can they help, constitutionally, what can I do? And these were the calls that, you know, I was constantly getting and thank God that I have people that I can call. Who are very knowledgeable with the constitution and we were able to instruct some of these parents. But it was for a while now, a violation of our inherent rights.
It, it was ridiculous, I was, you know, there's no end of surprises, I can tell you, um. And, and just as an aside, I would like the people to, to know something about my personality. Is that. That, those inherent rights and living in this country, and I am a patriot, I love civics. I took this job on because no one would run. They couldn't find anyone to run as a Republican. And I see why now. But I'm, I'm a person who gets things done. I am a D personality profile. I'm a doer, I get things done, I'm direct, you know, uh, so. I wanna get things done on behalf of our citizens and our families. That's, uh, uh, my job is not to take care of. I mean, salaries have to, you know, we have to pay our teachers and we have to, we have to do some things, but. I'm here for the community. I'm here to do what you want me to do. And it was very apparent what things were, what things needed done. But if you want something done, it's a personality type that you really are voting for.
And, no, I wanna, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
I wanna take you back to the taxes for a minute. Okay, so there were two options, zero tax and then taxation.
Thank you.
So what happened with that second? Yeah, what happened to that second time?
Offering was a two thirds to the max tax. Um, and so it would have been two thirds of four point eight. Because the index that time this year from legislature was two points lower, I think, than last year. So, okay, okay, so it was two thirds of that. But I really. It was, it was kind of, uh, the way that it was presented. That I was kind of scratching my head, I thought. You know, you sit in those meetings and you listen to the plans and you look at all the charts and you look at all the money and. And oh, by the way, we are privileged. The board members, we get all of the information a week ahead of time. So we're going through it in our email. We're looking at our, uh, uh, you know, you're on your iPad at night before you go to bed. And you're looking at the numbers, you're looking at the charts, you're looking at everything. So, um, I was unprepared that the two options were going to be zero and then a hundred. I was unprepared for that option to be brought. Because those are not really options anyway, right?
Correct.
So it really should have been a twenty-five percent, a fifty percent and a seventy-five percent. I think those would have been the appropriate, but we weren't specific in the ask. And so administration took it upon themselves to give us. I, what I believe is one option.
Correct, it was one option.
Um, that won't happen again. It's, it's, you know, they, they get you, but, um. It should have been twenty-five, fifty and seventy-five percent, that's what three options really would have looked like. And, uh, that's the kind of stuff that just makes me nuts because. That was a tactic. In my opinion, that was a tactic. And, um. You learn every time, every time something like that happens, you go, okay. All right, well, now we know that next time we have to be much more specific.
Correct, and the thing is, you know, something that we the parents have been observing from the outside. Is that administration has to learn to work with the board. Has to learn to work side by side, mo- more often than not, while we are looking and we are observing, we're seeing administration. Is like counteracting or going against, or going against the grain, okay? And at the end of the day, it's like, now I'm talking on behalf of the parents, okay? On the end of the day, we see as though administration wants to have their, the last say. They want to impose what they want on you and it's a battle and we see it. And then, you know, we have veteran school board members giving bad information to the community. And when you investigate the bad information, you see that it was bad information and it wasn't true, but the community has already been tainted. And then they come in numbers to yell at you guys for something that was non-existent. So the administration needs to be a little bit more submissive and come to the table with reason. And work out whatever differences they feel. And work out whatever differences they feel they may have. And also listen to what the plan in, at, planet and look at it from every angle. But they're so tunnel focused on what they want that they're not listening to the people who pay their checks.
No.
The people that pay their salary, the taxpayer. And it's becoming very apparent, apparent and very, you know, um. Belligerent at times, um, the lack of respect that we see the administration has towards you especially. Yeah, you know, and the board, but that has to stop also. And the parents are fed up and the parents are starting to call out the administration. Because enough is enough. Learn how to play nice. And if you can't play nice, go to a different sandbox. And that's where the parents are at with this, which I'm going to bring you into a different topic if you will allow me. And that is, because this is a question that I get a lot of phone calls about. And that is the Sunshine Act violation lawsuit. Where are we at with all this? What is, what's going on?
Should we start at the beginning or should we just say where it is now?
It's your floor. It's your floor. I'm asking you, I'm like, you know, let us know what's happening. Whatever you are allowed to share and what needs to be shared and, you know, and what's gonna actually bring the sunshine out to the truth. Because there's so many rumors out there and people are just making stuff up. And sometimes it's like we're seeing a soap opera. You know, these are the days of the West Shore School District, you know, or Peyton. There you go, you know? So um, what is happening with this? How, what's the core of all this?
So this is really delicate for me as a board member to discuss.
And we're not asking you to release anything that you're not allowed to release. We just wanna, we kinda try to get an understanding.
I feel like every single person in our community should know every little detail about this. That's what I feel like.
Well, we have the distorted version of it.
Well, see, that's the thing is, is they, they are getting um. There's a certain kind of malice that's out there, uh, that's being directed at us. So what we have in this lawsuit is a lawfare case. It's nothing short of a lawfare case. And, and it's all played out on the videos. And if anyone is uh, interested in doing some digging. It started in January of twenty twenty-four, which was my first month on the board.
Correct.
And um, there was a lot of talk from our constituents who wanted a conservative majority in. That uh, the, the relationship between. The solicitor and administration and the solicitor and other board members uh, was. I don't know what the word I. It, everybody was just very good friends. And we had lost a lawsuit. Which was our understanding at the time. And it was because of a constitutional violation. Which, I mean, if you can't get that right. And so it turns out that it was more of a. It, it's because something didn't get done in one school that was already done in another. I mean, this is what I'm being told, but who, who's to say? So we come in and um. We had Mrs. Thomas, who's been serving on the board from before. And she wanted uh, us to give our thoughts on the solicitor. And. We thought, you know what, we may end up right back where we land, but we at least should issue an RFP. She's been on the board as the solicitor for twelve years. Um, that's a long time. And she's never had her contract. Or the RFP reissued. Now, to be clear, we don't have to issue an RFP for a new solicitor.
Correct.
That, that is not in the policy. And when it came out that we should at least release an RFP so that we can search for a new solicitor. Um, or see what's out there. What are the rates? Who else is available to do this? Um, maybe we should get someone who will serve all of us instead of just the five. Or, or the four board members that she knew from before and administration, which is very close to administration. Um, so we thought. Maybe, maybe what we should do is just ask that we get some more bids and they can put in for it as well, no harm, no foul. Uh, but maybe that's something that we need to do. So we, Heidi and I, as the president and vice president at that time. Were able to obtain a sample template of an RFP from a law firm. Um, owned by one of our community members. So we brought that template in and it was pretty clean. And we got this from another uh, from another school district. Who was using an attorney from a particular firm, from that firm. So I thought, well, it's a place to start. Let's, it's a place to start. So um, we brought it in and on the Tuesday before the meeting. Uh, which would have been hmm, January, some early January. We gave it to Dr. Stoltz and Dr. Argo. And it was again, the Tuesday before the meeting. And it was in the early afternoon of the two, and this is, this timeline is very important. It was uh. The, the Tuesday before in the early afternoon. So we have an, just enough time to get this on the agenda. And get the copies to the board members in the forty-eight hour timeline that's required.
Right.
But we were well within this timeline. So we did our part. We took it, we have, we built the agenda. And we put it on the agenda. And we had a lot of pushback from uh, from administration, we'll say. Dr. Stoltz, uh, and uh, he said, well, that's not the way we do things here. And.
I'm so sick of that term.
I know, it's not the way we do things here. It's traditionally done a different way and all the things that they say. And so I said, are, is it legal or is it illegal? And he said, well, it's legal. And I said, well, I know it's not the way you're used to doing things, but. This is the, this is, I'm a business person, so this is how I would do it. So let's just, but we need, we wanna talk about it. But we need to stay, we have to be open in sunshine about this. So get it out. And. It was never disseminated to our board members until.
I'll say it, he sat on it, people. I'm saying it. Okay, I'm sorry.
But it did not go out to the full board. Until, if you watch that January meeting, and I think that's a really important place to start. Because that is what I have uh, told our sunshine attorney. And i- is that this didn't start in April, when we voted on Kevin Hall. This started the first real meeting that we ever attended. So we had the RFP, we, but it was never put out to the rest of the board. And if you go back to the January meeting, our first meeting. The fact that this wasn't given to them until one hour before the meeting, that's what I'm being told. That's what, that's what the board is. We opened that meeting, we get to the topic and it is brutal. Why didn't you have this released on time? Well, this is a violation of sunshine. So the sunshine talk starts in early January. It's a setup. It's starting to set the tone for probably. An attempted sunshine violation somewhere. They're just gonna keep saying it in the public. We never said the word. But the rest of them said the word. Sunshine. Uh, you'll, you'll see who said it that way. Sunshine. It's like, oh my God. Uh, but we're sitting there, uh, caught completely flat-footed. We had no idea that this had been withheld. So now we're in a meeting and now we're being attacked. I mean, it was brutal. It was a brutal meeting. And all four of the minority members of the board were verbally. Body language, tone aggressively coming after us for not getting it on the agenda in time. Not disseminating this RFP to the rest of the board on time. And that we were keeping secrets and we were not transparent. So also the not transparent tar- talk starts because I ran on curriculum transparency.
Correct.
So they took that soundbite, this group of people, took that soundbite of what I ran on. Which is curriculum transparency. For the sake of the school district and the parents, you know, they wanna know what their kids are learning. Um, especially with some of the curriculum that's gotten into our schools. So they took that soundbite and they took the word transparency and they've been using it against me ever since. People who lost the election, you know, individuals who lost the election. Um, and, and so they, they are constantly saying that, well, if you wanna be so transparent. You didn't put this on the, but, but we did. We gave it to administration to put on. We had a lot of pushback in the meeting, but they never said, we're not doing it. Because we're the boss. We're, we're the board, we're, we, we are the people. So they didn't do it. Um, and then that meeting came out and then they started to set the, the foundation for a sunshine violation right in that meeting. And by the way, that's all a part of my deposition.
I remember that meeting and I remember with them standing up and giving you guys the back and all dressed in a certain color. But you know, Kelly.
No, that was actually the April meeting. This one was. Where did, where did you get this?
I remember that one too.
Yeah, it, this was the first meeting because there were a series of these meetings along the way. Once they started, there was a series of meetings along the way. And um, so I, I, I can. I'll just fast track this. So we elected to table it. We, because we were unprepared, I certainly was unprepared to move it forward if they hadn't seen it. But now I knew that administration was deliberately and actively working against us. I knew it. And there's no denying it. Now, Dr. Stoltz says he has receipts. And he might, he may have, uh, he may have great documentation that they did everything properly and we just don't know what happened. He, he might, he might have that. But um, we were all caught by surprise by that lack of. That inaction was the beginning of the sunshine violation. It all started, if there, if there was a, a nidus, if you will. That's where it was. That's what.
I, the way. I'm hearing the story, okay? I'm hearing, I'm hearing this, you know, um, the side of it. And, you know, I used to be a teacher myself, okay, for a couple of years. I know how dirty administration can be and I know how we can have dirty, uh, school board members also, because I come from a big city where I've seen it all. But in hearing this and having to be fair on both sides, which I try to be most of the time, although people believe I'm not, but I try to be. Um, it sounds to me that it was a setup. I'm sorry. Because if you gave it. Eh, eh, that's what it sounds like. Because if you guys gave it within the time allotted, and there's two of you that are saying the same exact thing. Then it was the setup, okay, because they wanted what they wanted. And um, the reality of Mrs. Say, and, and, and I hear she's hearing this, but the reality is, we didn't want you. We did not want Brooke Say, and I'm talking, I'm talking on behalf of the parents now, okay? We did not want Brooke Say anymore. We have had our fill with Brooke Say. Because Brooke Say overstepped, okay, her um, position. She overstepped her authority, the way she would talk to the parents. That was very disrespectful. You know, and she was actually um, assisting um, the administration to push forward agendas and curriculums. That we were not in agreeance and not allowing us to see it. You know, during these board meetings with Mrs. Say present, they were having parents escorted out, which I have videos of. I have videos of of back then. Okay, so we did not, and that was one thing we made clear to the board, to the, to the new board when they come in. We do not want Mrs. Say. So you know, I'm sorry that her feelings were hurt, but the reality is. We felt that at this point, and I hate using this term, it may be the wrong term, so forgive me if I'm using the wrong term. But we felt that she was tainted with what seemed to be the friendship that she had with some of those board members and administrators. You know, now, we are happy, you know, that now we have a new solicitor, Mr. Hall. But one thing that I can say to Mr. Hall's credit is that he has never, ever. At least that I think, because you know me, I'll call it out in a hot minute, okay, disrespected any community member. And much less any parent with a concern. He would give his professional advice, his professional guidance, but which was the main difference that we had with our former solicitor.
Right?
Exactly.
He doesn't insert himself as an active part of the conversation. He's simply there to make sure that we are compliant with the statutes and the things that we're talking about. Yes.
Correct. And that's not what we were getting on the other side of, there will be people that'll hear this and go, well, she's wrong, she's wrong. You can say I'm wrong all you want, you know. I, I honestly don't care. Um, but I am telling you, you know, what the consensus, the feeling of the parents and a lot of the people in the community was. And we welcomed this change, you know, and we all thanked you when this change took place. But little did we ever imagine the lawfare that you guys are going through now. And also, I know Mrs. Brent hasn't put it out there, but I am, okay? As a taxpayer and a parent that have seen this with my own eyes. Not only the lawfare, but the cancel campaign done on the businesses of Mrs. Brent.
Right.
And her spouse and, 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 and Mrs. Cox and her, and her spouse, that was totally uncalled for.
That, you know, it was such a despicable act. It, it was really despicable because. You know, we had to worry about if we were gonna have to lay people off and people were very nervous. They were calling me a bigot. They would just call the front desk, say that I'm a bigot. And uh, they're pulling all their records out. And, and this went on for some time. And it was always on, you know, uh, a particular Facebook page. And uh, they continue to do that to this day. And, and the thing that is so despicable about it is they attempted to destroy something. That they didn't build because of the pettiness, the pettiness. And, and if they destroyed it, listen, ophthalmologists do not grow on trees.
They do not.
And there are fewer and fewer of them here in the, in the region. And if, if you take a bungee cord to the eye and you wanna save your eye, you need. You need an eye surgeon and that is pretty thin air. And by shutting down the practice, which was the attempt to do, by shutting that down. Our entire community would have lost an unbelievable resource. There are people out there with glaucoma. There are people out there with cataracts. There are people out there with um. All kinds of conditions, optic nerve tumors. That's not your garden variety optometrist. You know, and, and we love our optometrists because that's, they spot diseases in those eyes. And then if those diseases have to be treated at a higher level, at the surgical level or something higher, that escalates to an ophthalmologist. But to shut, to want to close a business that employs all these people. That puts food on the table for their own community to. Then not have anywhere for people to go for their eye diseases. What a selfish, disgusting mob of people.
That they were playing with the livelihood of other people. Not only the people that they're targeting, but the people that work for them that could have potentially lost their job. And I can tell you that I know how it feels because I think, I, I don't, I'm not sure if I shared it with you, but I know I've shared it with other people and many time on, on the podcast. I definitely have shared it with Jonathan. Um, my family was targeted on a doxing campaign, okay? And this was even before I even decided to run at one point for school board, okay? And all because we express a different opinion than this group of, than group of people you're speaking about, the same Facebook page that you're speaking about. So one of, one of the neighborhood um, gentleman that sits on the board. Currently sits on the board, called a doxing campaign on my family. Now, everybody that knows what my husband does, it didn't go, it didn't go too well for them because I cannot see them, you know, um, protesting. In front of a person, okay? If anything, they would have gotten, they would have gotten, you know, imprisoned themselves and, you know. And I did some research of some of the people that were doxing us and some of them had, you know, criminal records and I put that out there. But we have a current board member that doxed my family and endangered my family. Because it came to a point that my house one day was surrounded by people that I did not necessarily wanted surrounding my house. That law enforcement had to get involved. Now, thank God that was handled and thank God that my family and my children are safe. But I understand the repercussions, okay, that it can have and it can bring. And the, um, added pressure, okay, to your family life when you're worried about the, not only the livelihood, but the safety of your family members, especially my children. Because anybody that knows me knows I'm a mama bear, you know? You play with my kids, it's not gonna go well for you, okay? So, yeah, this is something, you know, and a lot of people sit here and criticize, you know, Mrs. Brent. But people do not see what Mrs. Brent, what Mrs. Cox, what Mrs. Davis, what Mr. Brenton, what Mrs. Thomas, you know, have all had to face. I mean, they are warriors and.
Yeah, they, we've really, uh, had to face life altering moments. And I wouldn't wish that on anybody. And, and, and so why would I even rerun? It's, it's definitely not worth it, but the community needs what I can bring, I think. Uh, they don't need another educator on that board, that's for sure.
No, they do not.
They need a fresh set of eyes that knows how to not only get things done, um, but won't let go until it's done.
And I'm glad you said that because one of the tactics that they've been using as of late is attacking candidates, specifically Mrs. Gonzalez. I don't know if you know about this.
Oh, I saw that, that's terrible.
Yes, as I show she's uneducated, she didn't have a career, no, she has a career. And Mrs. Gonzalez has worked in ministry for many years, helping people restore their lives again. Okay, people who are battling with different addictions, okay? And that is something that is honorable, okay, it's honorable. And I looked up, just out of curiosity, what were the qualifications in Pennsylvania to run for school board? And it doesn't say that you have to have a degree. It doesn't say that you have to have a doctorate. Anybody can run, okay, as long as they have good moral character.
You can run.
Yes, and you have to be a taxpayer or voter, good moral, good moral character, and at least eighteen years old. I did not know.
That's as it should be. You know, we don't want a bunch of elitist, uh, snobby, super, uh, you know, we, we want the board to be made up of our community and what our community looks like, you know?
Yes, and I want to take you, I'm sorry, I want to take you back to the lawfare. Yeah, they are.
Oh, okay.
I do want to take you back to the lawfare. So there is a, um, there's a lot of talk of how much the lawfare is costing us. Can you explain how much this lawfare, okay, that was, um, started by members in our community? I believe there are nine, if I'm correct, okay?
There is, um, well, there's John Elliott.
Correct.
And he's the one who is sort of being the attorney for the group. And then there are nine others, so it's ten.
So how much has this cost us already?
Nothing.
Okay.
But, but, um, that number is deceptive, so let me explain. I almost hate to explain because I, I, I don't necessarily think it would be good for this information to be. But, but so far it's cost nothing, but now the clock is ticking. Now it's going to start cost something. It's gonna start costing something.
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, and if you don't want to, you know, elaborate on that, that's fine, okay?
I guess I want to protect, I want to protect the board and the community in the school district.
And that is wise and I thank you for that, okay? But it's good to know we have an idea of where, um, that has been. Now, I do have a question, very general question for you. Um, in your own words, what has been your biggest challenge as a school board member? And what has been your biggest joy as a school board member?
So my biggest joy was attending graduation last year. That was such an incredible privilege to be up on the stage, sitting as a board member and watching all of these young lives and watching the tassels go across and, and watching the beginning of the next chapter of their life. All at the same time, it was, I was overwhelmed with this sense of privilege. Like, what a privilege I get to see this, this way. And, and what a privilege I get to contribute in some way to these young folks, um, in whatever way that I can, right, whatever it looks like. Uh, so I would say that that whole day, I think it was, you know, it's hours and hours because, you know, they're each, there's two high schools. But to see the diversity of children, to see the tall, the short, um, just, it, it was just, I can't even tell you. I mean, I'm, I was just, it was almost like I was in awe of it all.
I saw the pictures, you were glowing.
I, I, I was really truly so inspired by the accomplishments of the young folks. Because, you know, they got to come up and speak, you know, um, and, uh, it, it just was really, I don't know, it was something, something super special. The, the worst part of it has been the lawsuit, if I'm to be honest. Um, just because it's been, uh, a waste of time. Hi, honey. What you doing?
Hello, Dr. Brent.
Okay. The podcast says hello, Dr. Brent. Hey. Um, the lawsuit has been frustrating, but we also know we didn't do what they accuse us of. And the reason it's frustrating, what's that?
I believe that you guys are innocent.
Oh, no way. We didn't, we didn't do anything. Uh, we, we didn't even come close to violating the sunshine act. And, um, so we know it's a frivolous lawfare case. It is a frivolous lawfare case. Uh, but we just have to get through it. I was, so I would say that one of the things, you know, I have just a lot of aggravation because I don't operate at the speed of the board. I operate really fast. So everything is slow, but the process of this lawsuit is also very slow. And, um, we had to turn over our personal cell phone records to people that hate us. And that have ugly motives that aren't real. You know, they're, they're trying to slap us with the sunshine case, but we didn't do it. But we still have to turn over our personal phone records that we pay for. And I just don't believe that they're entitled to them. They're just a bunch of jerks. Uh, but we had to do it. We, we denied it the first time. We lost the appeal to that. So that's like a, that was like, that was a moment where you realize that they've, they've chosen the right tactic. They're doing something that we don't want. And, and we feel like they're in, they are the ones who are controlling our school district, not the board. And if they don't get what they want, they're going to destroy the board or destroy the majority. And then to watch other members of the minority throw us under the bus and, uh, say things that didn't happen. Or look at it from the point of view, like, you've got, oh, yes, they did do it. I can tell you, they absolutely did it. No, we didn't. We really didn't. And then have Mrs. Tierney sit up there and say, oh, there was a, a meeting of the minds. And she's declaring us. Now, don't forget, she's included in this lawsuit. The four minor, right. All nine of the board members are included in this lawsuit. But what they did, bless you, what they did was separate Heidi, Kelly, Mandy, David, Brenda, they separated us out by name. Our names are mentioned. The rest was just the Westshore School Board.
Like, but I believe that your names will be vindicated because I'm gonna tell you, I speak to the parents. And most of the parents, the majority of the parents, the constituents that voted you guys in, believe that you guys are innocent. Now, it's an issue of, you know, exactly, of letting everything takes, it take its course. And, you know, and for Abigail Tierney, yeah, um, these mobs that came out afterwards in these meetings. I have to prove, I have to prove, I have to prove. Because you know, everybody that knows me know I research, research, research. I have to prove that the ones calling out those maps, tho- those, those mobs was Abigail Tierney. She will email one person who will email the other and they will email the mob. And along with her, you have meddling in all this is Danielle Gross, who is a, a democratic, um, she's a democratic strategist, but she, yeah, because she's an activist for the teachers' unions, okay? And she also wa- has been weaponizing the media against our school district and against our board and that needs to stop. Now, I'm gonna hit you with one more thing. And I thank Mr., I, I, I thank Dr. Brent for lending you to us for, for a while here, okay? Um, but I am gonna, um, hit you with one thing that we'll probably close with this unless it is something that you want to add, you feel, feel welcome to. Okay? Um, about what, two weeks ago maybe? Yeah, two weeks ago. The Boiling Point put out a text message that, um, came to our hands, okay? After intensive research, came to our hands in reference to a board member, Adam Trong, trying to bribe another board member in reference to the situation with the solicitor, okay? If you, you know, side with us, we will make you precedent. Now, the community is angry, the community is presently researching what can be done because there has to be repercussions on, on, in the community, the taxpayers, the parents. This is the consensus, this is the feeling. Can I have your opinion about that text message? If you don't want to say anything, we can respect that too, okay? But I would like to know if you have an opinion in reference to the content of that text message.
It's, 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 it's potentially a criminal matter. I know that it's gone to, I know that it's gone to the DA. I know they're looking at it. Um, and it is everything that I would expect from him. And, um, and it's, it's a huge backfire because it's part of, um, you know, we had a discovery phase, but this text message got out separate from the discovery. But at the ti- I think it was discovery that kind of, uh, precipitated it coming forward.
Okay.
And, um, and that's when it was brought to, to my attention. And I'm just like, whoa, whoa. I, I have called a couple of friends of mine. It's absolutely a crime, they say. Um, these are people who are judges, so I'm gonna just trust them. Yeah, and, um, so I can't fix it. It is what it is. I, I, I think that we are going through the, or it is going through the proper channels. Um, but there's been a lot of backfire about this case, about the lawfare case. A ton of backfire and things that are denied that have been proven a reality. All the things that have happened to hurt us have been set up within the board from another board member who doesn't believe that the voters have a say. You voted for a Republican? Well, I'm gonna nullify that, I'm gonna take that Republican out. I can't remove them from office per se, but I can keep them so busy with BS that they're ineffective. So, um, and, and we have that. We have those emails. And it has been a revelation. And I am looking forward to this, uh, lawsuit being settled. They are coming forth and they're trying to, uh, get some traction on a settlement, but it's very important that you pay attention to this. You'll notice that they haven't settled before this primary.
Correct. Like they, with the, um, social emotional learning lawsuit. They don't want to lose their seats. They don't want to, uh, see, they don't want the truth to come out. Because if you remember, I think we were still running, um, because we, we ran in the same campaign for the social emotional learning lawsuit, they would not settle. Or actually, they would not release the fact that they settled until after the election. Right, so they were afraid that it was going to hit the seats, so it's almost the same thing.
Right, it, they, they will be able to hang over me that, uh, even though I'm up for reelection, that I have a lawsuit out against me. And I am in violation of the sunshine act, which I'm not, right? Um, and, but there's a certain group of people who just don't like my style. And that's okay. I mean, I'm not for everybody, right? But, um, but I will get things done and I am a conservative. And if you need a fighter, that's just my nature. I'll fight for you. But if, if it's just a, maybe not the direction people want to go, you don't have to vote for me. Because I would only get my life back, but I will dedicate my life to our people if I win. And what I bring is what we discussed. I, I can, I can bring that. Um, and, you know, that's, I'm here if the people want it. If the people don't want it, I don't want to waste my time with it. But I fear for our community. I really do.
I will say this, if we lose Mrs. Brent, okay, we are losing, um, a great asset. We are losing a great warrior for the parents and for the children of the Westshore School District. Um, I have seen, um, what Terry Mickel is about. I have looked at the organizations that have been supporting her. The one that worries me the most, I believe, is this one. No, that's Westshore Unified, okay? That one worries me too. But she is also being backed up. I want to say, and correct me if I wrong, you may know the name of it, um, Kelly, I think it's Voters PA. Or, um, PA Education, Education Voters. What worries me about that is, as, as I was doing my research on them, when they accept a candidate, okay? Um, and they endorse this candidate, they give this candidate a kit. And it is called an advocacy kit. And this advocacy kit is teaching, um, their candidates and the candidate has to agree that to stand for this, that if a parent or a group of people, um, are against, if they, a policy, a woke policy, okay? That does not align with their views or any religious people, whether it's Mormon, Christian, or whoever. Um, they are to refer to these people as extremists.
Oh, yeah. So you want. Bigoted extremist, yeah.
Right, you are being endorsed by people that, um, are labeling parents extremists and trying to take the parents' rights away. There's another organization that just started, I think it was last year, that I don't think they're a year old yet, which is Westshore Unified. Now, Westshore Unify, they promote religious persecution. They're like, it's okay if you have your religious views, but you keep those silent. It says it right on the webpage.
Yeah.
Okay, so she's being endorsed by companies, okay, and organizations that is all about woke agendas, okay? And I want you to understand the boiling point and even my own person, and I, and I also know that Mrs. Brent, we're not against and never will be against the LGBTQ community. It's not about.
No.
It's about, you know, curriculums that are being brought in that is a form of indoctrination in our schools that we want to make sure are not being brought in. And that the parents have the right to say, no, I don't want my child exposed to that curriculum. But rumors, and not rumors because we, we verified it. We got reports here at the Boiling Point and we did verify it. That, um, we have people promoting Terry Mickel as a Republican, as a conservative, as somebody, and I don't know if you've heard about it, Kelly, but if you don't, you haven't, I'm telling you right now. As somebody who is against the LGBTQ. They have also reported to me last week that we have a so-called pastor knocking on doors, okay? And saying how she is a Christian conservative. Listen, you can have whatever views you want to have. What you can't do is impose it on others, but to present yourself like something that you are not is concerning to us. It's concerning to us. So, um, It's concerning to us, so, um, I'm gonna show you what the boiling point and the parents, okay, believe that Terry is about. Okay, and this is as per the parents in Cumberland County, the conservative parents and the boiling point. We have been able to verify that she will be the wrong candidate for Region Two, because she supports all the LGBTQ agendas. Okay, she supports men and women's sports, she had a little hissy fit when, um, Adam Trone voted for the sports policy. I was there, she got up, she walked away, gathered herself and came back, okay? She supports transgender bathrooms, she's against parents' choice. And, and when I say parents' choice, it's your right to put your child in cyber school, in a Christian school, in a private school, something other than public school. Um, and we know that we have lost a lot of students to cyber school. And if we're gonna be truthful about the matter, and this is what the parents and the boiling point is saying, a lot of it has to do with the administration. And soon, we will be having an episode in which parents that have pulled their children from the West Shore School District Public School will be speaking up as to why they pull their child from the public education system here in the West Shore School District. And I think that, you guys, it's gonna be an eye-opening episode, I really do. Um, she's against parental rights, she supports critical race theory, pornographic novels in our school, in our school libraries, and thank God that our board is now putting policy in place to make sure that the material in our school is age and content appropriate. And I will also encourage the board, if they're hearing me, to please, um, include an addendum, that any donated materials that comes to our libraries, that it has to be cataloged, because at the moment, they're not cataloged, they have to be cataloged. And also, maybe we can keep a database as to who donated and when. She supports diversity, equity, and inclusion, she supports emotional learning, social emotional learning, you know, we got through about that. Support, um, mental health evaluations without parental consent, supports frivolous spending, supports higher taxes, we call hard tax to the max. Mickles, that's our, you know, loving term for her, she, um, she is running bipartisan. So she filed on both sides. She's not a Republican, and she's not, um, and she's not a Republican, and she's not a conservative, she is a Democrat, okay? So do not beli- not, do not be deceived. She, um, does not hold conservative views. So as I've been asking for the longest, do we need another woke agenda in the, another woke advocate in the West Shore School District? No, say no to Mickles, the lady that we need in the West Shore School District is the lady that you see right here, Kelly Brent. Because she is not discriminating, and, and I've seen her, from the moment that she took seat, she has not discriminated against any group of children. Even with the sports policy that was passed, I loved it, I loved it, because everybody was protected, everybody, okay? So it's not that they're discriminating, it's not saying, well, you can't be part of the sports, no. You know, just play the sports according to your biology, and then even in elementary school, you know, kids can play together, they can compete together. But we have to, we have to be real, can you imagine me going against Casey in football? It would be like I'm crashing into a wall, because men are stronger, either which way we put it. So I applaud you for that policy, that was a very well-written policy. And now they're working on the library policy, which we are calling common sense policies, and the library policy is looking good. It's looking good, and we are liking it, granted, they're still working, and you know, making sure that the wording is correct and things of that nature, but it's a step in the right direction to bring common sense policies back into the West Shore School District. So we do not need any more of the old guys, we do not need any more advocates on our board. We need to bring people with common sense, with people that are going to protect our children, protect parents' rights, and bring back academic excellence to the West Shore School District. And this lady that you're seeing here, she is one of them. So with that being stated, is there anything else that you would like to say, Mrs. Brent, on closing?
Well, I would say that I'm, I'm very sorry that our community has to go through this law, lawfare case. Uh, it was unnecessary, it is another act of incredible pettiness. When these documents get released, um, you will see that it's quite the opposite, in fact, the other side was engaging in violations of the Sunshine Act, and, um, it's, it's all kind of sad because it has wasted so much time, and I only, you know, we have no greater commodity in our lives than time. Money is nothing compared to your time, you know, it's sixty, my clock is ticking, I, I'm in the last season of my life. And I wanna be doing helpful things at the last season of my life, good things, and I'm here to help. Um, and no one wants to do it because of what we have to go through. And, um, we have to stand up, somebody has to stand up, someone who's strong enough has to stand up and say, come at me. You know, I, I'm gonna get this done, I'm here for the people, and if you have to bully me, if you have to dox me, uh, go for it.
Correct.
It's, it's, that's, it's a very, very hard thing to deal with, it's a very big distraction, and, um, on Tuesday, we'll know whether or not the people trust in in me, um, trust in me to be doing what the majority of parents want done. Uh, I will, I will, in, in closing, say that Terry Mickle has come to, uh, many school board meetings lately, and she's been speaking at those meetings. Um, but she never, she talks about something that isn't, she's not willing to jump into the deep water. When she comes into a meeting and she talks.
Right.
She, she is only willing to say, you know, contact your legislature about a fair funding formula for the, you know, budget, or, or some nonsense like that. But that's not what we as board members do. Right? We, we, we work on what projects need done, how much are they gonna cost, how are we gonna facilitate coming up with the money? Are we looking outside the box for more money, which is what we are doing now? Are we, look, she doesn't talk about curriculum, you know, she doesn't talk about the policies, except she did want to make sure that we were more inclusive. And we don't need this kind of restrictive think, or whatever, you know, she was saying, she was against the policy uh, that we voted for, that keeps boys and girls' sports separated at, at a certain place. Um, so know know your candidates. And I'm very proud to run on my record. Have I made mistakes? Yep, you, you, you do. Do I accept those mistakes? I do. But as a person in, in private business, you adapt or you die. That's the way your business is gonna succeed, you adapt or die. I have adjusted my sale a number of times, and I've reevaluated my style a number of times. Um, so what you see with me is what you get, I'm happy to give it to you if that's what you want. The unfortunate thing I noticed about my opponent is that she's not really talking about issues within our community. She has a sign that says her name, and it says the school district, that's all it says, it doesn't say, I stand for this. I support that, it's, it's almost like saying, uh, I grew up here, and I'm in education, ergo, I expect people to vote for me. Without bringing anything new to the table, she's just another educator.
Correct.
And I don't wanna marginalize our educators by saying that, but we have that on the board now. But you need to have some outside business perspective, I think, to round out that board. That, that's what you really need. And, um, unfortunately, somebody who is an outside business person, doing it as long as I have, you have a certain amount of clarity and frankness that you bring to the table, because our time is our most precious thing, and, and being completely forthright and honest is an efficient way to do business. If you're, you know, sneaking around over here and over there, you, you're really not gonna get to the goal, and the goal is to, to lock down that client, get that client in a contract. And then fulfill that client by the means, uh, by your infrastructure. I believe in being very, uh, forthright, and that's what this statement is for me, it's a very forthright statement to say, um, I, I, I don't trust anybody that's not willing to say where they stand. If they're hiding, right, yes, there's a QR code on her signs.
Which leads to West Shore Unified.
What's that?
The QR code, we scan that, it leads to West Shore Unified, which we all know are on the wrong side of everything.
Yeah, they're on the wrong side of everything, so you're really not
And I'm, you just stated something we've been saying, what do you stand for, over here, over here and outside? Cyber school ban, cyber school ban, cyber school ban, cyber, it's over here.
Funding formula, fair funding formula, fair funding formula, you know, duh, 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 duh. Um, but, but there's a lot going on, and you, you really need to have a passion for it. And obviously, I'm very passionate about it, and I wanna get things done. I wanna bring us up to where we're supposed to be and try to hold us there as long as possible, that's what I would love. Um, but with Terry, you're gonna get another, you know, um, educated person, now I'm educated, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't, I shouldn't say it like that, um.
You're gonna get another advocate.
Educator.
Yeah, but, and, and I think it's a little bit more than that, cuz I would love to have a great educator, that's great teachers.
True.
But what we're getting is an advocate, yeah, what we're getting is another advocate.
Advocate whose life is in education, and, and who's, you know, educating, uh, her, her job description requires that that tax people pay into the system, does that make sense? And nobody's giving me any tax revenue, believe me, I'm one of the payers into the system, so you, you really need someone outside the education industrial complex to help you and be more rounded to get where you wanna go. Um, we have Mrs. Cox, who's retired educator, we have, uh, Mr. Cambic, who's retired educator, we have, um, Mrs. Davis, who is, um, she homeschools her children, and very successfully, so I may add. Um, we have Mr. Gus White, who's married to an educator in the school district. So we have a lot of people who, in some way, circle back and benefit from the West Shore School District in some way. And I am completely outside the system, but I'm gonna be different, I'm a different kind of leader, and I am a leader. I am a leader, get behind me, I'll take it all, just get behind me, I'm gonna run through this, come, come, just stay behind me. Um, I'm, I'm just a leader, and I lead because I know where I can get results, and I know how to get things done.
And you have been a
Not your style, don't vote for me, I, I don't, you know, but I hope to, I hope to be able to have explained some of what's going on, some of the ugliness that has come our way, and yet I'm willing to run again. I'm willing to run again, uh, I will not be willing to run after that, but I think I can get those things done. I think I can kick some of those things over the finish line that I believe Redland deserves, and, um, but you're going to need, Mrs. Mickle is not going to, she doesn't have those relationships, she doesn't have, uh, she doesn't have the history of having to withstand an audit from the IRS, make sure that everybody's being paid properly. There, there are a lot of pieces to owning, owning your own business, it is a high-level thing. Um, I, I know how to get things done, I don't know, I don't know what she's willing to do, because she doesn't say.
I don't think she knows what she's willing to do, because she hasn't said anything concrete to, uh, the constituents, as of yet.
That's alarming, that, you should be afraid of that.
Disturbing.
Mm-hmm. It is, it's, it's a trick then, if you aren't willing to say what you stand for, you shouldn't be running.
Correct.
And so I'm, I'm going to use my business skills to try to get these schools where they need to go, and they've got some things that need to happen. And, uh, I, we should talk about All Day K for a second, I'm all about All Day K, but that's going to be a three-plus million-dollar implementation that will never then stop. So think about that, I already told you what three million dollars is gonna cost the taxpayers, right? And, um, three and a half million dollars, that's what the number's gonna be in the end. To get it started is a big, big number, we've got a natoryon that's falling apart. We've got, uh, a field that we need to do for some equality for Redland, and when those things are done, we move on to the next thing. Uh, Mr. Trone is, uh, he wants All Day K. Uh, and I think All Day K would benefit our students, absolutely. You know, so it's, it's really hard for me to know there's a need, but right now, we have to pick and choose our battles, we've gotta put out
The thing is, if I, I sat in a meeting, okay, and I'll be short, because we're gonna be wrapping up soon, but I sat in a meeting in which um, all-day kindergarten was discussed, and at the end of the day, we all understood that financially, we can't swing it at the moment, okay? So that was made, um, correct, and that was said, and we never said we're not gonna have it. We said we will, moving forward, okay, revisit this again. Okay, so why Adam Trone and why Terry Mickle keep pushing this? As though the conservative board does not want it, as though Mrs. Brent does not want it, yes, we want it. But, you know, we have to have the monies there, because it's not only, okay, well, let's start in All Day K, bring all the kids to my house, no, we need, we need the spot. We need the personnel, we need the finances, we need lunch, if lunch is gonna be served, or breakfast is gonna be served, we have transportation. Uh, some of these kids may need counselors, you know, there's so many things that come into play financially that we just can't afford it at the moment.
Yeah, our, our community is growing. And I, and I hope that we're gonna be able to, um, revisit some, uh, some buildings that are undertaxed, some, like, so we're gonna be working on, uh, fi- trying to find some more revenue for our community in a way that's very fair. And, um, anyway, so we're working on all of those things, and I, All Day K is going to be a recurring cost once we get it in place.
Correct.
It's gonna cost three and a half million dollars, I am sure, to put it in place, after that, it will probably be maybe three million to run it every year, and, and once we do it, it is a, it's in perpetuity. You won't be able to just take it out, once it's done, it's, it's in. Um, that's why it's a good idea to just do the natoryon, because once that's done, that's done, right? And then, uh, do the red, once that's done, that's done, Redland's done. And so I wanna tackle the things that they have a period at the end of the sentence, and then we can, then we can reassess everything from there.
Correct.
So I hope that makes sense.
It does, and I do thank you for being so candid with us today.
Very, very honest, very frank.
Yes, I thank you, you know, for, uh, speaking, you know, truths, what needed to be heard, informing our community, we are very appreciative. I'm appreciative to have you here in the boiling point, again, I thank Ms., I thank Dr. Brent, I keep calling it Mister. I thank, thank Dr. Brent for lending us his wife, for lending us his wife for a while, so when he sees it, thank you, you know, um. But yes, May twentieth is primary day, guys, again, like I've been stating for a while. This Tuesday, yes, it's this Tuesday, get out there and vote, primary day, remember what I always say, vote for Mickle, you're gonna get us in a pickle. So we need to make sure that Mrs. Brent is voted back in, so that we can make sure that what has been started comes to fruition, okay, and also that common sense policy continues, okay? Continues to come into the West Shore School District, and that we bring academic excellence for everybody back into the West Shore School District.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Brent, if you ever, if you ever wanna speak, uh, speak with us again, come on, let us know, we'll be, we'll be happy to have you. And this is Mariana, you're so welcome, thank you, from the boiling point, May twentieth, May twentieth, guys, I'm gonna tell you in Spanish, I'm gonna tell you in English. Kelly Brent, School Board Director for the West Shore School District, Region Two. We need to keep Mrs. Brent in her seat, we need to finish what we started, we need a warrior, because she has been a warrior. Somebody with a backbone, with business knowledge, okay, with education knowledge. They don't like her, you know why they don't like her? Cuz she's getting the job done. May twentieth, vote in Mrs. Brent, Region Two, and for Region Three, Mrs. Gonzalez. Because it's time for us to say, it's been too long, your time is up, goodbye, Mr. Gisway. May twentieth, Mrs. Brent, Region Two, I expect to see you there.
And please contact your Republican friends, this is a primary after all, independents don't get an opportunity to vote here. So contact your Republican friends and get the vote out, if the Republicans show up, we won't have a problem. If the Democrats show up and the Republicans don't show up, I'll get my life back. So
Get out there, guys.
Get the vote out.
Get out there. Call me if you need to know what region, where you need to go to, to vote, what poll, call me, we will get you the information. So God bless, everybody, May twentieth, this is our candidate, this is our candidate, the true conservative, the true Republican, and the one that's gonna make it happen, the one that's gonna bring change to the West Shore School District, the change that we need. And she's guiding us into the right direction, May twentieth. Mrs. Kelly Brent, Region Two, God bless you.
Enjoy this beautiful day. Bye.